We'll get started with our meeting. Are you ready? Okay. If we could do, ask everybody to silence their phones or turn them off. We are located here at the County Commission Chambers. It's June 13th, 2022 at 11:00 a.m. We will start out the meeting with a prayer from Sam Passy and a pledge from Lisa Colethorpe.
Our quality have more special than we live in the land of reason. We thank thee for those who have served and who serve to protect those people. We ask thee to guide us, direct us, will make decisions today that will make sound decisions that will help the people living in this area. We pray that we may continue to receive the rain and water that will help us to feed the animals and ourselves and the earth and so on. We pray for healing and peace in the serieses in the name of Jesus Christ and Amen.
You've already stood, so please follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Alicia. Next item is approval of minutes. We don't have them done because the meeting went so long last week, so we'll approve those next week. Next would be report on the warrant and review of counter signature certified list of claims.
Commissioners, I have warrants from June 10th in the amount of $251,207.10. There was another payment on a third Mountain West truck for $109,268 for a truck for the road department.
Mike, is that, that was the one from the CIB grant?
Yes, that's what has come out of his CIB.
Is that the last truck?
No, there's two left.
I don't remember how many we ordered.
Five.
Five?
And we've done three.
So we've paid for three now. And I want to make record that these were not created, modified, or deleted in the auditor's office. I do have today for certified list of claims, two of them. First one is check number 380400 to Thompson Reuters for $1,492. This is a service agreement that the county attorney has, but there was not a, there was no PO issued on that one. There's also, the next one is our 38412 to the Vernal Area Chamber of Commerce. This is the annual $6,000 membership fee for the chamber, and there was no purchase order issued on that one. So I'm mixed on that one, but I just thought I'd bring it out and point that one out, because it is an annual fee that we do pay. Signature, proper signatures, everything was there. There just was not a purchase order. And that's all of those.
Okay, I did have a couple of more. Check number 380148, election systems and software from clerk auditor, no PO at time of purchase. 380229, US Bank, United Airlines Commission, no purchase order. 380304, Snowbird, this is a vendor, Children's Justice Center, no purchase order. 380356, election systems and software clerk auditor invoice did not match PO.
That is, that particular one has multiple invoices on that one purchase order, and that is a contract we have with them.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
On the Thompson Reader one? So this is our subscription for our legal, our legal research.
Correct.
We renew it every year under a contract with them. Sometimes it changes based off of the, the contract. But that was a question I had on if it, if it needs a PO like our other standard, our other standard contracts that, that we approve, they come in and then we get an invoice based off of the contract. I'm wondering, are, does the purchase order, I didn't see it in there, but does the purchase order require a PO for your standard contracts, like for our electrical, our utilities with?
Those are monthly ones. These are usually annual ones. So I'm, like I say, that's a routine.
I'm just trying to figure out where, where do we, and maybe this comes up in our revision of the purchase order, which there has been talk that we are going to maybe need to revise the purchase order. But this one was just, because it's our, or, yeah, the, the purchasing policy. But this one where it's, it's just our standard software contract with, with Westlaw. That, that was my question on how it falls outside of the other ones where there isn't a PO required.
Okay. Any other comments?
I guess, my question is, I guess to you, Mike, just wondering where, where is the distinction being drawn from your office on why this one handled under a contract and as annual billing or a monthly billing isn't being required to have a PO, but then a service agreement with a, with a research, or even like our Adobe software we have, our Microsoft software we have, our Google contract that we have for our email and, and Google Drive, are those requiring a PO, or is there some other line being drawn? So that, that way we just know if we need to sign a PO or not.
Right. That's where it's kind of hard on this part, where you've charged me with coming up with what is a claim and what's not a claim. So that's falling back on the clerk part of this job, because I go back to that this whole list is a claim, and they should approve every one of them, like we always have forever. But in your reading of things, we want to do it differently. So now you're leaving that back to me. So right now we're following is whether it was, was there a purchase order or was there not a purchase order?
Well, just to be clear, my, my advice has always been we follow the statutes.
Right.
So when we had those discussions months ago, we went and read through the statutes that we don't have to approve the so-called warrant list, because your office and the treasurer's office is completely empowered to pay that. It doesn't have to come to the county commission. So that was an instance of empowering the clerk auditor's office and the county treasurer's office to just pay those bills and make a report back to the county commission, which the commission is entitled to a report.
Correct, and they do get that report.
But doesn't have the authority to approve. My question is simply just on this bill from the, which, which we got this morning, which, which is fine. But how do we make the distinction that this on an annual subscription with Westlaw requires a PO, but something else doesn't require?
Throwing back that one, do you know, and I'm not aware, if we actually have a service agreement signed and approved in a public meeting on Westlaw, or where it's that amount of money and you just, and Jamin determined that's his service provider for that? I would have to look back and see.
I would have to, too. My understanding is we, we've had one with Westlaw way back into Mark Thomas's time.
Yeah.
As, as our research software.
But is it?
But just like Adobe and Google and Microsoft and all those other software agreements, are we going out and then we're purchasing the software and then the bills just come in annually? So I'm just wondering, do they require a PO under the purchasing policy or not? I didn't see where it did, but maybe I missed it.
For our software purchases, we, it does. When we come through with new licenses or renewing the license, IT brings that down as a.
I know that we, my office just purchased some updated versions of the Adobe, and I did do a purchase order for those. So it's kind of a fine line there. Is this a true contract that we've had for, is it updated? I don't know. I know they're continually providing the service to you.
I think Westlaw actually, but Jamin had lost something. We've had that one come up before us this year for approval in commission. So there is a contract approval of some sort, but we have that with some of our software vendors otherwise as well.
And I'm, I'm fine either way, just trying to figure out where.
That's kind of what we've drawn the line on now, is if we can find that there's been a contract recently on it, then we just go with it. But if we were not able to find a contract on them, you'd like, same one with this, the chamber one, I know there's past agreements with it. I don't know if we've renewed an agreement this year with it, with them or not. So I just, to err on, I'd rather bring it out and.
Okay. Can we check and see on the contract with the chamber and see if we need to get one?
We can follow up on that.
I thought we had one.
It's an, usually it's an annual agreement that's approved.
An annual agreement and.
With laying out the quarterly payments.
Well, but that's separate. That is the.
That's the overall agreement.
That's the overall agreement. This is the.
But then the invoicing comes in.
The membership on this one.
It's, it's usually divided, or it comes in with one of them, because we try and, we used to put it four equal payments through the year or two.
And that's their, that's, that's the other agreement. This is the membership for it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Entertaining motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, go ahead and approve the certified list of claims as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Cemetery certificates. None today? Tax matters.
I wanted to jump up here quick before I forget, because I'm not usually the one to present them. But Commissioners, I am here today to ask for an abatement of taxes for a property in the name of Jason Winterton. It's serial number 586 and 76. This number, that serial number for 2021 was being taxed under serial number 586 and 81. So we discovered this and realized that it had actually been taxed twice. It's the one and the same property. For next, for this year, that old serial number no longer exists. It'll only be taxed under the one serial number, but for 2021, I'm asking for an abatement of the tax on serial number 586 and 76 in the amount of $1,136.79.
Okay. And that was for, was it Thomas Winterton or which Winterton was it?
Jason Winterton.
Jason. Okay. Entertaining motion?
Mr. Chair, John, did you, was somebody going to say something? Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the abatement of the duplicative property tax collection in the amount of $1,136.79.
Okay.
As presented by Wendy.
Have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? John, anybody clarifying questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you, Wendy. Any other tax matters today?
Janet Brooks, Uona County Assessor. The Uona County Assessor is requesting a refund of county assessed fee for Jack Kloon Trucking Incorporated at 4150 South, 2500 East, Vernal, Utah, 84078, tax district number two, in the amount of $110. The reason for a refund, the truck was totaled in January of 2022, and the registration was renewed and aired.
Okay. Entertaining motion?
I'd make a motion that we refund to Jacklin Trucking LLC, $110 for a vehicle that had been totaled.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Business licenses. Any other tax matters by anybody? Okay, business licenses.
Good morning. Gabby Hawks Blackburn with Community Development. We have two today. They're both home base with the same conditions, if you'd like to hear them.
Hear them both.
Great. The first one is Be Simply Forged, located at 5032 South Highway 88 in Randlett, parcel number eight, 1158. This is in the A4 zone, and it's a home-based, like, online custom gifts and boutique and crafts. The home is where she, like, makes the things and her offices, but customers don't go to the home.
What was the name again? I'm sorry.
Be Simply Forged.
B.
Yeah, like the letter B. The next one is Jensen Lawn Care. It's located at 16355 North Paradise Park Road, parcel number three, 1711. This is in Recreation Mining and Forestry. This one, it's really his parents' location. He's over the age of 18, so he is technically like a tenant. The parents have signed the tenant approval to do business. This is a lawn care business. It says Jensen, not because it's located in Jensen, because that's his last name, not to be confused like I was. So we went out and checked it out. Everything looks great. They just store their equipment there and use the home as a home office. So both of these are with the condition that they follow all Uona County home-based business rules and regulations. With Jensen Lawn Care, just so it reflects on the minutes, this includes that all business operations are ran out of the main home, not any accessory dwelling units on the property. And with Be Simply Forged, this includes that at the time being, her manufacturing does not need a conditional use permit. If she scales, it may require in the future.
Okay.
But both of those are reflected in the home-based business rules and regulations.
Be simply. Okay.
Okay. Entertaining motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the two home-based business licenses presented by Gabby Hawks with approval contingent upon compliance with all home-based business rules and regulations.
I'll second it.
I'll second it, or I'll say, okay, but we've got to clarify, it's Gabby Blackburn now. We all know where's Gabby Hawks.
You're not wrong. Legally, it is Hawks.
Hawks.
I'm very sorry.
Gabby.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next three items. Cheryl was not able to be here, so John, you're going to take these, correct?
Yes, I can present them. And so Cheryl found out last minute she needed to go out with her son out to Salt Lake. Nothing serious, but they're, needed a medical procedure and they could do it today, so she was like, we're gone. So just wanted to make sure that she's excused. So I'll do the best I can on, on these. But they're, they're pretty straightforward, so I think we can move, move on them. It, it's really is a, a package approval on the resolution granting an easement, and then the resolution of non-impairment, and then assignment and conveyance. Commissioners will remember when the service district does projects on roads, this is the standard format that, that we use. We're, we're approving a grant of an easement, because under CIB rules, the special service district needs to have some type of a property interest in a road before they go and do a project. And then the resolution of non-impairment is that, to the extent that funds stay the same, we agree that we're not going to impair funds in, in order for the project to be completed. Of course, if we had what happened a few years ago where everything was essentially drying up, we, we wouldn't be bound to these, these agreements, because that's not an action that the commission would take. It's a realization that funding has changed. But anyway, so all things stay, staying equal, the county would agree not to impair the funds. And then there's the assignment and conveyance document, which is the document that would be recorded in the recorder's office from the process that we've followed for, for many years. Specifically, the roads in question, or, or the roads at issue with these documents. Oh, I gotta find them. Okay, it's the, it's for crack ceiling, chip ceiling, and line striping of the Dry Fork Canyon Road, the Deep Creek Road, the Glen Bench Road, and Independence Road. So that is, that is the project itself. And there was a, there was a funding amount. I apologize. I, I got these to present today as well, so I apologize for not being better prepared. Let me find the, there should be one here on what the funding amount was. Okay, there we go. Yeah, it's for $1,945,000 of mineral lease revenue bonds. So that's the presentation there. Let me make a comment for the county attorney's office. This is great. Project is fine. There was, because we're in between transitioning with three districts going into one, that's been kind of the ongoing question. Do we need to insert the special service district number one into these documents? It was represented back to me that it's the transportation district's intent that they will fully pay off the loan, and so that we wouldn't have to transfer these funding documents over to SSD number one. But if that doesn't fit the proper timeline, it would just be one more document that we would need to transfer, but nothing too difficult. But I did ask that question last week.
Okay.
Just for comments, do you remember how much we got in grant and how much we got in loan on that?
I think we got about $4 million in grant from CIB. It's about a $5 million project.
All right.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion on all three at one time then?
Is it three or just two? The resolution will just take under two.
There's two resolutions.
There's two resolutions and, and one assignment and conveyance. How about just for clarity in the minutes, let's do one for each item. That way it's easier to track the, the action. And that way, if there's any discussion on any particular one, the commission can, any commission member can bring that up.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on resolution number 06132022R1.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we go ahead and approve the resolution as stated for granting the easement on the resolution approving the transfer of an interest in all rights currently possessed by Uona County and the county roads. We need more than that in there?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. Entertaining motion on resolution number 06132022R2.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that the commission approve resolution 6132022R2, resolution of non-impairment, or resolution covenanting to not impair the mineral lease revenues of the Uona Transportation Special Service District so as to negatively impact, impact said district's ability to repay its outstanding bonds, including its $1,945,000 mineral lease revenue bonds, series 2022 and related matters, with the understanding that prior to paying this off, it may be transferred to Special Service District number one intact.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this, this item? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, the third item on here now is assignment and conveyance.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion on these interested in, interest in county roads. Do I need to name them, John, specifically? We've got Dry Fork, Deep Creek, Glen Bench.
Independence.
Independence.
Yeah, it's, it's those four roads.
Independent roads, as been stated earlier by the presenter.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
Can I ask, can there be a insertion into that motion?
Sure.
And then approve any other documents to affect that, that conveyance? Just have that clause inserted in there.
Okay. You second that?
Second.
Okay.
I did have a question.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes. John, I just did have a question. That assignment and conveyance of interest in county roads is not an, it's not an undivided interest. It's still, is it enough interest to do what they want? Are we giving up all interest in those roads for this period?
No, it's not an, it's, it's not a complete conveyance. It is an undivided interest, and then it's returned back when the project is completed.
So during the period that it's conveyed to them, what does Uona County have to do with those roads? Anything?
Well, we'll still patrol. You'd still do any snow removal, all of our other activities. Of course, that would be restricted if you're in the middle of a construction project. But you're, we're still managing if somebody wants to put a utility line through that right of way, that would still go through our road encroachment permit process, everything like that. But it's, it's giving them that interest in their, it's a, it's a requirement from CIB.
It is, yes.
I don't know if I want to opine on whether or not I think it's necessary or not.
Okay, that's enough.
I'll just, I'll just stay silent on that, and it's a requirement that they want.
That's, that's all I need to know. All right.
Okay. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Chair, Cheryl was great. She got it all color coordinated here for people to sign. So I'll, let me just hand that to you, and then if there's any questions, she should be back in town.
Okay.
I think by tomorrow, and then.
Sounds good. Do you want to move this next item to the end then?
That's, that's up to you.
That's up to you. I think we will. I think if, if, if we can, we'll move the agreement between Uona County and Jonathan Stermer for development of the musical for John Wesley Powell Festival to the end, because it, you're gonna, we're gonna do a little, we gotta contact an attorney and have him on the phone to, to work with us. So we'll just cut up the, the meeting. So we'll do that at the end. So the next item would be Children's Justice Center contract amendment.
Kylan Beatty of Children's Justice Center. The contract amendment is with the Utah Attorney General's Office. It is a one-time funding that they are giving to us to additionally spend for this current fiscal year. The funding is $6,000, which would make the new contract amount $885,016.
I'm sorry, you're not, you're speaking kind of low.
Sorry.
So it's an amendment of adding $6,000?
Yes, one-time funding.
$6,000. It takes it up to $885?
And $16.
And $16.
And then, did you state your name at the beginning?
Yes, Kylan Beatty. Sorry.
I didn't hear that either, so thank you. Okay. Entertaining motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the contract amendment for the Children's Justice Center to add $6,000, bringing the total $885,016, including authorization of signature.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? John, you have any questions?
No. It was sent up to our office. We reviewed it, and it looks, it looks good.
Okay. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Spectra Solar LLC contract proposal. Do you want to come up and state your name?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. I'm James Tally, and I'm with Spectra Solar. A little bit about our company anyway. We're, we're based out of Georgia, but we work across Texas and across the Northwest. And what we provide is not just, as their name says, we're not just a solar company, but we also provide natural gas generation and other types. Anyway, so what we do, we've been working with the, with y'all, as y'all know, for about last year or so, anyway, to put together some proposals for some solar and natural gas generation for the facilities here. The way that our, our model is set up, we provide 100% of the financing and the funding for the projects, do all the development. It's at no cost to the entity. We've also, while we've been here, we've been working with the, the utility districts, with the city of Vernal, and to put together some proposals also, you know, so we're, we're getting close with those. But, you know, we've met with y'all several times, and y'all have a couple of the proposals in front of you that we've talked about. But, you know, we've met with y'all several times, and y'all have a couple of the proposals in front of you that we've talked about. But, you know, like I said, this is, you know, going into it, the, the goal is, is no cost to the county. It's a budget neutral. Should be, you know, it comes from the line item that you're already spending, and then hope, should be some cost savings out of that, long-term and short-term, is our goal.
Would you touch just a minute on the, the natural gas generation, on what we're, what you're proposing to do with the, the Corrections Facility and the REC Center?
Yes. Yeah, so what we have with those, those two facilities, very large users. So what we're looking under the proposal is to provide some solar and, but a hundred percent of the generation also from the natural gas. So those facilities would actually have a, not just a, a backup power per se that they'd run. The system itself would run a hundred percent of the facility. But it would also add, you know, backup generation. You would still be grid connected in case something happened to our system. We'd maintain that with Rocky Mountain Power. But also, at the same time, we're looking at adding the C H P system, which is more or less, it's a, a way it converts, it pulls the heat off the generators. And we actually will reduce the natural gas purchase for the boilers at the facilities. It'd be the REC Center and the Public Safety Complex. So there should be a, a significant reduction of what natural gas that you have to purchase. But I mean, on the other side, we, we'll be purchasing that and operating our generators to, to run those facilities.
So the heat to pull and, and the boiler over there at the.
Yeah, yeah, it'll take the boilers, more or less, it, it preheats all the, brings the water up to a substantial temperature above where it, it comes in now. And so it takes very little heat above that to be operational, to heat the pools, and also for the boilers for, at the Public Safety Complex for their operations.
Okay.
So the heat generated by the operation of the generators is gonna preheat the, it's gonna cut down on the amount of gas required to get the temperature up. You said considerable. What percent are you talking about?
I want to say, and I'm not an engineer, but I think it brings it up to around ninety percent of what you would, what you'd be at. Yeah, so it goes through the, it, it has a, more or less a, a transport. It comes, brings the heat off of the, the generator itself that it produces, and it goes in and goes through an exchanger, which is inside your facility. And it, so it ramps the temperature of the water up there, so it, it gets within about ninety percent, I think, is where it's at. So there'd just be a very little amount of therm from natural gas that you'd have to do for your boilers anyway. Could be a reduction, you know, on the number that you have to use. But at the same time, you know, we, we won't know that until we get into the final design of it, but it should be close to that.
Because it sounds like it would be arranged based on how much electricity you were using, as to how much heat was being generated. So it's ninety down to sixty-five or something like that, depending.
Yeah, and it, it could be, but the, normally the way that, that that's set up, there'll be two, for each of those facilities, there would actually be two generators. It would be set up, it'd be sized. One of them can actually operate the facility as a standalone. The second one actually is for a, or for redundancy, to make sure that if something happened to one, or if it's down for maintenance, that, you know, you still have sufficient coverage and make sure that the facility's taken care of. So really, those generators are idling to a point. These are not just backup generators. They're actually power producers. So they'll be, they'll be functioning and creating heat.
So we'll be paying for the natural gas that goes in there, but we don't have to capitalize the equipment, the generators, the.
Yeah, no, you, you know, you won't be paying for the, we'll pay for the natural gas that runs the generators. That's part of our, our, our program. The only thing that you would still sustain is the natural gas that runs your boilers, but we're gonna reduce that down, hopefully, when we, when we get to the final
Okay.
design. Yeah, so we, we pay a hundred percent of everything for the operations, and all you'd have is the, the, what the agreed-upon energy service agreement would be, which should be less, less, equal to or less than what you're paying now.
Do you know what the power companies do to you for, I know they require you to, they're gonna charge you so much every month, whether you use it or not, to be on standby, don't they?
It, it really depends on what you, the how that your rate schedule's set up. And a lot of the time, the biggest part of your, your charge usually is from your demand side. And so, I mean, we're, this, this will, there'll be, there'll be some kind of, there'll probably be some kind of base charge that Rocky Mountain will want to do there to stay interconnected and run parallel. And we won't know what that would be until we get into that final design stuff and incorporate all that number in, in with it. But there could be, there'll be a base interconnection fee that will be there, just to, as a backup, like you said.
And then you've, you've met with the REC district on their side, because they're two completely separate things than us.
Yes, sir.
So you've met with them on that already?
Yeah, we've met, we've met with them, and we've gathered up the power bills from the REC district. We've gathered up all the power, the power and the gas bills from the REC district and the, the sheriff's, the Public Safety Complex, and the other nine facilities that we're looking at under this program. So we've reviewed and did a, a high-level study anyway, pretty in-depth, and, you know, so we think our numbers are accurate. But, you know, we'll, you know, to lock them in, we just, we need to do it more in-depth with some engineering onsite studies and things.
Okay. Well, I, I had met with you last week, and I appreciate you staying. It's nothing we can take action on today. The, the contracts are with John, and so over the next two weeks, as he goes over them, he may have some questions, and we'll bring it back and see what we decide, so. With that, I appreciate. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Yeah, please.
This all sounds really good, but I question, what's in it for your company? Is this something that needs to be bid out? Because you're, it sounds like you're throwing in two generators of some sort that we don't currently have. So somebody's gonna be putting some money up here that needs to be. The whole thing probably, my first thing is, does this need to be bid? Because I doubt you're the only one out there in the United States that does that. That, is it something we need to bid out before we just sign in the contract?
Yeah, and that's why
Yeah.
we can't make any decisions today. We got to dig into it.
Them are some questions I had.
Yep. Sure. And that's, and that's one of the things that, you know, be happy to work with y'all or whatever, you know, because this is a, you know, it's not, it's a non-budgetary increase. You know, so it's really a lineup. So what we're providing, really, it's under an energy service agreement, which is just like your regular utility companies. And, you know, it's a, but of course, we need to make sure that the language is right and proper to, to go under that. Most circumstances, from what we've seen, of course, this, Utah's, you know, this is a different state, so I, I certainly don't know all the laws and stuff or whatever. But a lot of the, a lot of the other states or whatever, it falls under the, the ram of that, so it kind of, it doesn't require to be bid out. You know, it's a, it's a service rather than a, it's, rather than a, you know, a, trying to think of the wording. I'm not, I'm not an attorney by any means.
Mike, could you, let me ask you another question on this. Where it's a utility, we, we won't, we wouldn't own, I've read over the contract, we wouldn't own the panels or the generators. All we are doing is purchasing the power.
Yeah. All you're buying is just the generation.
So we don't own anything?
We don't own anything. It's, it's one hundred percent just purchasing the power from, from.
We're, we're not buying anything, but at the end of the life of solar panels, thirty years.
We don't want them. They're gonna take them back.
We don't want them at all, but, and I don't know about the generators. If they're also, they've, they've, and the way we've, way I've understood it is this is subsidized by the federal government and/or the state through green energy subsidies, which we're all paying for through our gas prices at the moment. It's also, you're taking advantage of tax law to write off the, depreciate the equipment itself. And then, so there's, there's a lot of it right there. But at the end of that, are the generators like the, like the solar panels? Are those, those are yours to take, or if we wanted them, we could have them, or what, what's the deal?
Yeah, we, we could work out, and what, and let me kind of, two things to kind of expand on what you just said. You know, how, you asked how, you know, what are we getting out of it, and, and you're exactly right. You know, the way that we're able to set this up is, you know, we use the, the federal tax credits that's available and the depreciation, the bonus depreciation that's there or whatever. So we're able to re, recover a significant amount of the investment, and then that is covered over the, the contract term. So we look at our, our projects as long-term investments in partnerships with the communities. So, so that's, that's what we get out of it. You know, everything, of course, we're all for profit. But at the end of it, you know, it can be set up. The, and I understand you're saying, you know, after thirty years, you don't want these, but the systems that we're, that we'll be putting in is, they're classified as the high, high-end panels. They're the thirty-year panels. They'll still be producing out probably about eighty-two to eighty-four percent of the original generation at year thirty. You'll still have, the inverters will probably be up and operating, and everything be good. The generators will be maintained and be functioning. So, you know, at the end, end of the thirty years, because, you know, we can't go into it just for, you know, different rules and laws and stuff or whatever. We can't say that we'll, you know, can just turn the pan, the system over to you at the end of thirty years. But we certainly, that's something that we can negotiate and, and work with it. And I think the E S A, the way it's set up, it says at fair market value is, is what you're allowed to at the end of the term, and we'll negotiate that fair market value. We can do that well before the thirty-year term, but it has to be after the first seven or eight years. We can't go into anything prior to that.
So my question to you, Mike, is if we're purchasing power, and we don't own, own anything, what process is? Is that still a bid process?
Under the Public Service Commission, Rocky Mountain Power has the grid for this area that we're talking about. So right now, they are, we don't even have the option to look at Moon Lake rather than Rocky Mountain, because they.
Own franchise.
They, yeah, they own the franchise, so what we would be doing here is you're saying, okay, we're not going to use Rocky Mountain other than for backup. We're saying we're gonna go a different direction. So now you're getting out of the franchise, the Public Service Commission bubble that says, because if you take U N A County, Vernal City and the center downtown, that's Rocky Mountain, but everything outside is Moon Lake. So they have that area that the public service has given them. So that's why it's not bid. We're, they're the only ones that we can buy power from. Same with natural gas.
Right.
They're provided by.
Dominion. But we can contract and buy through some other, one of those con, contract companies?
Yeah, but it's how do we go about the contract and awarding a contract to someone?
Well, that's, that's why we can't make a decision.
And how would you bid something like this out, where they're providing all this, the equipment, everything? There's lots of unknown questions that we'd want to make sure that everything is.
No, I agree. That's, that's why we can't make a decision on anything until we.
On that power too. I know that even though we may not be gonna use it, I feel like we need to look into, make sure, you know, Utah Power's not gonna, Rocky Mountain's not gonna have this sitting here. And that's not using it. Then the day you flip it on, there might, what is that minimum charge?
The minimum charge. And that's a Rocky Mountain question.
It's, it's all in the contract. If you read through it, it's, there's a lot of that information in there.
On the solar, it's a little different, because under state law, they've got to buy your solar, excess solar generation. They don't have a choice. So there's, I, we'll let the contract deal with that, but it's a little different than that. Those people that were trying to sell us gas, you can only get a one-time window every year to sign up for that, and you've got to go, gotta get their approval to do it. But on the electric, I think you can go put solar panels on your house right now, and if you can generate excess, Rocky Mountain's gonna pay you, pay you for it.
But I think they also charge you a minimum.
Standby, standby, I think.
To stand by or even, I, I don't know.
Demand meter, demand. I, I don't.
I, I think all that's in that contract.
And that part, part of that we'll bring back as part of the, the final design stuff with those, those questions answered. Because I, I truly, I've had some discussions with Rocky Mountain Power, and they've been very, very willing to work with us to, to do some of this stuff. Like Commissioner Stringer was saying, you know, their, their program is set up. They're very pro solar and very other generation for local, but, so I, you know, so they're, they will, I think there's an option with the lack of, I don't want to say lack of, or the, the decrease in power generation within the area that we can work, you know, with them actually, because they, I think they'd be happy to see some of the additional generation that could come off of this and, and possibly some of the other stuff we're looking at.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. No, go, go ahead and give it to John. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a co-op agreement for the airport project three four nine zero zero three seven zero four three two zero two two.
Morning Commissioners. I'm Zeke Atwood, U N A County Purchasing and Grants Office. We have two cooperative agreements here on two grants that were awarded to the airport as U N A County as the sponsor. As a sponsor, we receive that money from federal funding. That money is passed through the State of Utah Department of Transportation, and then they pass that money through to the county. So we have to have a cooperative agreement to have the Department of Transportation act as the county's agent, and that's what these two agreements are for project forty-three and forty-four. Project forty-three Airport Rescue Grant and project forty-four Concessions Relief Grant Airport Rescue Grant. I believe John's office, you guys have reviewed these and, and gone through them. Is that correct?
I think we reviewed them a while ago. The links that were sent here recently, those links have, have expired now. So I'm going off the discussions that we had where we're pretty sure this is, there, there, this is what we were talking about, right? Just refresh my memory, that we thought this had gone through a commission meeting months and months ago. And Ken is really certain that it did, but we weren't able to really find, we weren't able to find record of it. So maybe the intent was there, but then it never, it never made it on the agenda, so we weren't talking about these, these two documents. We were approving other documents. We've approved a lot of airport documents over the past six months, but. So I'm going off of my recollection that we did a while ago, and then there's this question of did or did not come through a commission meeting?
Yeah, so there's two separate contracts with each grant too. We have our contract between us and the federal government, which that's what went through months ago on these two projects. And then there's a separate one with us and the state, and that's where I think the confusion was. I think they thought that that was sufficient, and then we had this as a separate contract too, so.
So my understanding, this is not, this is paperwork that needs to be approved, but not on any actual, like, new projects that the commission isn't aware of?
Correct.
Okay. Any other conversation, questions?
Do we need to have dollar figures in these motions to approve this, or Zeke, do we have the dollar figure?
Usually that's for informational purposes, but we can have it.
Yeah, there's not a, the dollar amount on these agreements. It's just acting as sponsor for the, the agreement.
Okay.
The, the project itself.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the co-op agreements for the airpro, airport project three four nine three seven four three two zero two two. Can I do them both at the same time, John? Or do we want it at a time?
That's a, here they're connected, so just.
And also the airport agreement for project number three four nine three seven four four two zero two two, as presented by Zeke.
Okay, I have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thanks, Zeke.
Don't forget John.
Yeah, I won't forget John. Okay, John, do you want to call?
Yeah, I can give you the number.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna call it on this one?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, this, we're going to deal with the, uh, agreement between U N County and Jonathan Sturmer for development of the musical for John Wesley Powell Festival.
Joseph.
Hey, Joseph, this is John Sturmer. How are you doing?
I'm well, thank you.
Good, good. Hey, you're on speakerphone in the commission meeting, so you got about twenty-five people listening to you right now. So good, good luck with that while you're on the phone. Um, I'm going to, I'm going to step down because this is actually a personal matter for me. So I'm going to step down and go to the other lectern. But you're on a conference phone that's up here with the three commissioners, just so you know the arrangement of the room. Okay, so I've stated the, well, I'm going to just say it one more time so you know what we're talking about. This is an agreement between U N County and Jonathan Sturmer for the development of a musical for John Wesley Powell Festival. John, do you want to do presentation on this or?
Sure, I'll have to state my name for the record. Uh, John Sturmer, citizen of U N County. Uh, I am here in my individual capacity. Um, Joseph Shapiro, which is on the, on the line. There was a engagement, uh, letter that was signed a while ago in commission meeting to engage his services for, um, copyright law. So this is just me. If there's any legal questions for U N County or if the public has any questions like that, Joseph will be answering those questions. I'm just me. Uh, so.
John, think, one second. Joseph, can you hear, um, John or can?
I can hear the will of the thing sometimes, but I hear what he was saying.
Okay.
Okay. If this doesn't work, I wanted to be here because I'm just presenting as myself. If, Joseph, if you can't hear me, I can move back up onto the, up where the commission is and get closer.
I can hear you and I'll let you know if I can't understand.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, so, Mr. Chair, can I just kind of give a little explanation of what's going on? Okay, so back in twenty nineteen, um, you'll remember that we started the John Wesley Powell River Festival. Uh, that came from, I had some conversations with Leisha. We went, wait a second, that's the hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of John Wesley Powell floating down the Green River. And out came this river festival. And, uh, we had that starting in twenty nineteen and then twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And we're gearing up for the fourth one now in, in twenty twenty-two. Um, so we were thinking about that. I was thinking about that. And then I happened to just be driving across Strawberry and, and I was actually thinking about taking my family to Canada of all places in twenty twenty. And then the pandemic shut all that down. But before that, I was doing research. I was listening to Canadian music. I was listening to all kinds of things just to kind of get excited for a vacation up there. And I really latched on to some songs from, uh, an artist. His name is Alan Doyle and he lives up in Newfoundland, uh, in Canada. Uh, tours across the United States with some of his music, but he has kind of an island, North Atlantic Irish kind of feel to his music. And as I was driving across Strawberry, I was listening to a couple of songs and I had Powell's, uh, journal going through my mind. And I started going, wait a second, this song would go really good with this part of the story. And then I listened to another one of his songs. I'm like, wait, that'd be really good into this part of the story. And so in twenty twenty, I came up with this really, really crazy idea of writing a musical on John Wesley Powell. And, um, it took a little while to get in contact with Alan Doyle's crew up in Canada, but I finally tracked them down. And I've been in email communication with them since probably spring of twenty twenty-one. So it's probably been about a year. Uh, fall of twenty twenty-one, they, they showed some interest and said, yeah, this actually sounds like a good idea. But then for what various reasons, things just went kind of silent. Then in, um, trying to think of sequence of events, I'll just say early this, this winter, because I can't remember if it was before Christmas or in January. I finally did get in touch with the, the main publicist for Alan Doyle. Uh, had a good conversation with him on the phone. And he said that Alan Doyle is very intrigued by this. Um, and that he give, he, they would give me the rights to use his songs to put together a workshop that then we could essentially sell this idea to Alan Doyle to then obtain hopefully the, the rights to use the musical or to use his music in a musical. So with that, um, I approached the commission and said, hey, what if we put a musical together on John Wesley Powell? Here's the idea. Right now I am writing the script on my own time. And I have a published author here in town that's helping me with the dialogue and, and she's great. And I have a few colleagues of, uh, musical colleagues that are willing to help out in putting this workshop together. Um, and I have by email the, the rights to be able to use this music to put a workshop together. Now we need to work on an agreement for the development of musical, which essentially deals with the intellectual property. On, on what's being written, what U N County would own, what myself as an individual would own. And then we would work, after this is approved, we would get the workshop done. And then I would work individually with Alan Doyle to try and secure those rights, hopefully fall of this year. That way in twenty twenty-three, we can go into all of the final writing of the script, getting all the music put together, having all that done. And then in twenty twenty-four, which is the hundred-and-fifty-fifth anniversary of John Wesley Powell floating down the river, that this musical would be, its debut would be over at the amphitheater. Um, I've already talked to Outlaw Trail Theater. They are, they said that they would have this be their main musical for twenty twenty-four. And we run it in conjunction with the River Festival. So instead of, instead of having their musical in the spring, early summer, they would shift it to August and we would be able to have this musical and the River Festival all running. And it would be a big, huge party, um, on that. So are there any questions so far?
No.
Okay, so, um, in, in the agreement, well, let me do this because this is kind of boring talk. Let me just give everybody kind of a highlight of what this music sounds like. Okay, so the first, the first one, I'll put, and I'll put my, uh, mic down here so people can hear it. The first one is a little excerpt of one of the songs. So we'll play that. That's one of the songs. Another part, I'll do a quick point on that. There is a bar scene, which gets a little rambunctious. And this is the music for that. It's a picture of a lot of really, uh, happy people in a bar in Green River, Wyoming, uh, having their last party before they decide to essentially voluntary, uh, commitment to death on a river, uh, as far as they knew. So that's that one. And then there is a love interest, uh, a lo- a little bit of a, uh, story arc of a, of a love story that goes in there. And I'll do that one real quick just because it's a really cool song.
I can't fly on my wing without a bird. I got nothing to sing. There's a jewel in every ring. I know it's you.
There. The bea- the beauty of this scenario is I don't write music. And to sell a musical, you have to have really good professional, just like production-ready music. We have it here. Uh, so that's, that's intriguing part. And then the Powell story is already essentially written in journals. Um, a lot of it is in the public domain already. And so it's just putting all of that together. So the terms of the agreement are this. There is, um, I'm, I'm writing the musical and that there will be an assignment of my rights to U N County that I agree and assign all of my worldwide copyrights and creative works for the musical to U N County. Um, that would be, uh, May tw- through May twenty-one, continuing through August twenty twenty-four. And that date will make sense as we get through the, the terms of this. Then, um, and Joseph, if you're on, if you want to interject anything, uh, uh, go for it.
I will, if I need to.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Uh, and then, uh, one point two, then U N County will then grant to Sturmer a worldwide exclusive perpetual sub-licenable royalty-free license to all of U N County's copyrights in the musical. So U N County is going to own it, but then sub-license it to, uh, myself. Then this is where you have the consideration that the, the license begins, uh, on the latter of August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, or assuming the River Festival happens in twenty twenty-four, the conclusion of the River Festival, the twenty twenty-four River Festival. And the reason why is because notwithstanding all that we've talked about, U N County retains a perpetual sub-licenable right to publicly perform the musical in U N County and exercise all other ri- or exercise other rights. For example, reproduction of written representations as necessary to support such public performances. So what that, what that means is the public of U N County gets a free musical. I mean, obviously there's payment. But what I mean is if Outlaw Trail wants to run it, if Vernal Theater Live wants to run it, if the school wants to run it, if some other group wants to run this musical in U N County, it is theirs. Um, and, and they get to run it. If it's outside of those, then it, the sub-license to me comes into effect. But essentially the people of U N County get the right to have a musical about John Wesley Powell. Um, in this, it, it does say that there, it's anticipating to develop the musical, that it assumes that U N County will be able to acquire several, acquire rights to several of Alan Doyle's songs. There's actually a total of eight songs. And I just received an email this morning on the final two, that they're okay with us using those in the workshop. So now I'm able to make sure we put the whole thing together. There are two other songs, but they're in the public domain. And so we're able to use those as we see fit. Don't need to acquire any rights there unless it is the actual arrangement of those songs. So anyway, require, uh, acquire rights to several Alan Doyle songs and other intellectual property assets that the parties currently anticipate incorporating into the musical, acquire third-party copyrights no later than December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. So that's the deadline to try and get this all wrapped up with Alan Doyle. Uh, then it goes down, the acquired third-party rights may include an obligation to pay use-based royalties to licensor of the acquired third-party copyrights. If U N County fails to acquire the acquired third-party rights by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, Sturmer may in his unilateral discretion terminate this agreement by providing written notice to U N County no later than January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and Sturmer shall retain all rights in the Sturmer contribution. Essentially it's saying if it can't go to a musical, then I get to retain all my written work on, on the script and stuff. And I don't, I don't know what I'll do with it, but I, it's, it's mine. Okay, then on the financial support, and Commissioners, you have seen all this, so I'm just going over highlights for the meeting. Uh, financial support, U N County shall provide reasonable financial support for Sturmer's development of the Sturmer contribution or efforts to advance development and/or exploitation of the musical. The parties anticipate that such financial support will be principally in the form of payments to third parties and/or vendors, for example, supplies, materials, recording, editing services, et cetera. Obligation shall follow U N County's purchasing policy. And just for clarity, there is nothing in here, I'm not receiving any compensation in the development of this musical. So it'd just be, for example, as we've talked about with V-six Media, using their recording studio to be able to do the, the workshop. So we actually have good sound, good, good visual, that sort of thing. Um, laws, it's governed by the United States copyright laws. The remainder of the agreement is governed by the laws of the state of Utah. We have notices as by law, any notices under this contract would go to the clerk auditor. And then any notices to me, uh, I have my address down there. And then it has signed by U N County, signed by myself and attested to by the U N County Clerk Auditor. So with that, I don't know if there's any other questions on this, but that is the idea. That's the hope, that we will continue to march forward and have an amazing party in twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
I've seen how much work and effort you've stuck into this, just from the outside here a little bit, John, and, and the River Festival. And of course, you always have to include leadership with, you know, the work that's been done there and the effort that you have volunteered to do on this and the works of the, you know, the Outlaw Trail Festival. And I just want to commend you for doing that. And what a great public service this is and great for the community. I love the idea.
Any other questions?
Sam?
Sam, do you have any questions or comments?
Sam Passy. Sam Passy, um, U N County citizen. I think that this is a compelling project, a very interesting idea. Um, and I'm aware that of other counties, such as Salt Lake County, through its Zoo Arts Park, Zap Board, where they'll grant, um, grants of funding in a specific amount to agencies, organizations to do work, putting on a play, developing something. And as a citizen, I, I wonder about, um, if there's precedent in this county for the type of proposal that's been presented by, uh, Citizen Sturmer.
Citizen Sturmer.
And, uh, but I, I applaud, uh, again, Citizen Sturmer on his, his efforts and, uh.
Just say John. Simpler.
I, I could say that, that's correct. And thank you very much for the opportunity to make this public comment. Um, but, but I, I do, I personally, as a citizen, I have no, uh, question that this would be a fabulous idea. But also as a citizen, I would wonder about the mechanics of it. And, um, yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you, Citizen Sam.
Jonathan, Jonathan? No, Joseph.
Joseph.
Joseph. Do you, do you have any comments that you would like to add?
No, I mean, I, I think that, uh, John accurately described the proposed legal arrangement. And I, you know, from my experience doing copyright law and intellectual property things, to me, it seems like a reasonable arrangement where, uh, you know, essentially John's going to be providing a lot of free services to the county and developing this musical. And when it's all said and done, you know, the county gets to perform it forever inside the county. And then John gets to make some money outside, if he can, outside the county. I mean, to me, it seems like a win-win. Of course, that's kind of my non-legal analysis, but legally I think it makes sense too, uh, as far as just making sure that everyone has their correct rights. So U N County has this great thing and then, you know, letting it live on afterwards through U N County and through John's efforts to, and you performing.
Okay. Come on.
As a citizen.
Travel and tourism.
Yeah, I, travel and tourism.
Okay.
So.
Would you say your name?
Leisha Colethorpe, U N County, Travel and Tourism. Um, I guess my question becomes like, and I, I don't, there's a few things that I don't know that I had caught in our conversation. But so if this, if U N County is purchasing the rights to the music, that's basically what this is going to be. And we discussed that. Um, but then you talked about making it free to the public. So I don't know that that would replace the Outlaw Trail Theater for the summer because they would need revenue, right? Theater for the summer, because they would need revenue, right? Or would they, like, only have one free showing? Like, I think we need to clarify that, just so that not all Uena County residents think they can come for the regular two-week Outlaw Trail Theater and attend whenever they want for free.
Yeah, so let me be a little more clear on that. The intent is that the, any theater entities that want to use this musical do not have to pay a royalty to it. They can still charge ticket sales.
Okay.
So Outlaw Trail can charge tickets. And I've talked with them, and they said, yeah, we can run this in 2024. But they would not have to pay a royalty. They're usually between $6,000 to $12,000 or $15,000 a year to get royalty rights for any play. I don't know what specifically it is for Newsies this year, but Disney charges a lot more than regular people do. But they would not have to. Vernal Theater Live would not have to pay a royalty. The Uena School District would not have to pay a royalty. If anybody's putting it on within Uena County, there's no royalty charge.
It's the royalty fee. So it's not like, hey, Uena County residents get to.
No, it's that, exactly.
Okay, that's where I.
And I appreciate that clarifying question.
Yeah, okay, that was my question.
Joseph, could I comment on that?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so just to make it clear, I mean, on paper, you know, at the end of the day, so in August 2024, after the River Festival, Uena County is going to own the copyrights for this musical. So who thinks to use it and for what price? That's Uena County's decision. I mean, based on what I've heard, is that there'll probably be a lot of, you know, free licensing, right, to schools or whoever inside county. And I think, you know, that to me, that sounds like a good outcome. But just to be clear, Uena County will own it, and it's not like it's being donated to the public domain. That's Uena County's decision how to use it.
Okay. So the county, just so I can clarify that, the county at that time, we could decide we wanted to charge Outlaw Trails and the school a thousand bucks for royalties, if that's what we decided to do.
You could.
Okay. Okay.
What it's doing is that Uena County is retaining that right. Though, like, for me, my interest is, if it's in Uena County, knock yourself out. Let's let the residents of Uena County through the county enjoy this musical as much as they want.
Right. Sonya, did you have a comment that you, yeah, come up?
Sonya Norton, public citizen. I just had a question. I think there's actually a lot of questions. It'd be a great discussion, I think, with public or other people involved. I like the idea of having the music in the musical. I just don't know if the county's the right place to be purchasing it and doing it. That's what I'd like to have more discussion about. I think it could be with the other plays and things that are brought here, I've never had this come up before to a municipality or a county to do it, but maybe it's common in other areas. So I just had some of those questions, if it could be more done on a private level and then bought by the different plays or whoever would like to use it. That was more along my line of questions.
Okay. Do you have any other questions? Commissioner Stringer? Joseph, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. I think, and this is just my opinion on this, and to go along with what Sonya had brought up, I have the understanding and that we have developed through travel and tourism, through Sam, through John, through the, John Wesley Powell is going to be an ongoing, an ongoing event, festival that we're going to promote year to year to year. And our understanding, my understanding was if we own the rights to this, we can perform this as many times as we want to, versus if you owned it personally, we would have to pay you a year, every year that we put it on. Is that correct?
Well, I would just, if, essentially, yes. Because if you're trying to go out and get another musical somewhere else, there's a royalty aspect of being able to do that.
So over the next 20 years that we're having this festival and continuing this on year to year, say they put it on every three years, it's, we get to do that as many times as we want. The high school, everybody can do that, correct?
Joseph can answer that. But in my opinion, that's Uena County's discretion.
Yeah, this is Joseph. That's correct. It kind of becomes a Uena County legacy, you know, legacy item or asset where you can do this as many times as you want to, whenever you want to.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
If we was to buy these rights, John, from somebody doing what you're doing, writing this play, putting this together, I think you might have mentioned that once, but what kind of cost would it be if we went to somebody and said, this is what we want? You getting any idea what kind of cost would be into this, John?
I actually don't know. I mean, if you were to go out into the private sector and say, we want to retain somebody to write a special production for Uena County for the River Festival, I have no idea, because it'd probably depend on who you get. If you get, you get somebody out of Hollywood, it's going to be a lot of money. You get somebody out of Salt Lake, maybe a little cheaper. And just to be clear, this is something, I mean, I have never written a musical before. This is something, without trying to get too personal, was something that I could not get out of my mind. And it was something that generated itself. And I've been putting it together, and it's been amazing to see how it comes, how it comes together. And with the story that I think Uena County can tell about its own history, about a very quiet figure in United States history. Not many people know the story of John Wesley Powell and the significance of what he actually did. And even in the state of Utah, we saw that the 150th anniversary of the Golden Spike got all the attention out of Promontory Point. And we tried to, like, hey, we have a huge thing that happened here as well. And people are, this is a new, a new story. As I talk to people and ask them, do they know who John Powell is? Most people don't. But when I say, you remember they floated down the river? Like, oh, I heard that story somewhere. Yeah, that was John Powell. So it's a, it's an underserved story right now, probably needs a little bit more attention. So this is, this is my idea.
Joseph, one last question.
Okay.
Have you seen this, this kind of arrangement in other counties, cities, states? Have you ever seen this done before?
No, but I mean, honestly, my experience is, you know, not really broad enough to tell you if this happens regularly. I mean, this is, you know, probably a relatively rare occurrence here, where a county has a custom-composed musical for it. So it's hard to comment on, at least for me, whether this happens other places. Maybe just to address a couple minutes, because there's a question of, how much would it cost to commission a musical like this? I'm just guessing here. I'm guessing that for, you know, services that John is providing, he'd probably be paying a hundred, two hundred, fifty bucks an hour to commission a musical. And, you know, I think Uena County is getting a pretty good deal here. And that's just seeing other numbers in the industry, you know, having something get prepared like this, where you're basically paying cost-only, and Uena County likely wouldn't want to perform this outside the county anyway. So really, all that John's getting is kind of the, kind of some residual rights outside the county. So as far as like what the cost to Uena County, you know, what would be the cost to commission this? A lot. And it's basically going to own the whole thing inside the county. So, you know, I think it's, I think it's very reasonable. I mean, I don't know how often this happens in other places.
Okay. Susan?
All right. I'm the second to the oldest person here.
Hey, state your name, please.
I'm Susan Horrings.
Thank you.
So Alta Winward, I don't know how many of you remember Alta Winward, but Alta Winward did this with the Outlaw Trail Festival. And Brad and I were in on that when this happened. So maybe Uena County is, got the kind of soil where it germates people to come in and write the musicals. So according, Sonya, yes, this has been done before. Alta was best friends with the commission. She got the Outlaw Festival to go. So what you're doing, kudos to you, it's been done before. It's a wonderful idea. Please do it.
Okay.
So let me try and summarize what I think is going on. Because I have listened to this, I've read the documents, but basically, basically in a clinical kind of a fashion. We have seen a development of travel and tourism. That is now a component, a noticeable component of our economy. And it's always been, even, even years ago, hunting and people talk about the days of tourism here. What we've done is we've identified, it started with the 150th anniversary, remember, people dressing up, we filled up the pond out there, we had all these activities, and it seemed to go over well. So what we're saying is they're trying to make John Wesley Powell an integral part of the fabric of our travel and tourism. We're, we don't get exclusive rights to him. There's a museum down in Green River. But nevertheless, we want people to associate John Wesley Powell and the adventure from Green River to Vernal. That's something we want to make our own. Is that a fair assessment? It's a good thing to leverage. So we could write our own musical. We don't have to pay a dime. Sounds like we've tried, some of those things have been tried before. The quality suffers. We happened to find, John, you happened upon some music that you thought would fit what we were doing. So here we are. We've found some music, a person who is willing to license it to us. Is that, it's not exclusive use, I take it, but it is?
No, it wouldn't be exclusive use to his music. But he would, I would, I mean, the way I'm going to pitch it to him, if we get to that point, is that now we get to repackage his music. Some of these songs are, you know, 15-plus years old. And if this takes, he would be able to repackage it and then get, you know, some really good publicity as well.
The choreography of the musical, Clint Eastwood, Lee Marvin, walking around singing in covered wagons and what have you. The music has now been acquired, or this would acquire the music.
No, no covered wagons.
Okay. So the choreography is still to come. That's what you're doing. So you've got this lifeblood of music that is now going to infuse the acting. And then that will become Uena County's annual hallmark or annual show. And it will go on our websites. I'm assuming it will go through our promoters, Leisha, the ones that we've, that we said, oh, come see the John Wesley Powell Festival. Now, that's going to be, I mean, that's, I see the immediate and maybe the short term. I wasn't understanding a lot of the, what are these perpetual rights out there? What, I mean, I, this is for Uena County's benefit. The major beneficiary is going to be Uena County. People showing up to watch it, schools using it, other places using it. So that all seems pretty straightforward. What I'm not as clear on is what happens and who benefits if it were to make it to Broadway.
Joseph, do you want to take the first shot at that one, since it was a Commissioner question?
Sure, if it makes it to Broadway, John benefits. But, yeah.
And he's got to pay taxes, right? So I guess we benefit there, too.
Yeah, you'll have a wealthy resident, potentially.
Okay. Well, that's just, my short view, my short-term view is, it does seem to be a county for the benefit of the county. I get that. We could try it without buying the music. We could try and make a group effort out of writing a musical and composing songs. We're just taking some, taking advantage of work that's already been done. Got it?
Okay. Just trying to decide if, do you have anything else you'd like to add, John?
No, I mean, the last thing that I'll add on this, because I've already kind of said how it came about and the ideas that I have, and the wonder behind it, to be able to have, you know, production-ready, concert-ready songs, to be able to put into a musical of a story that really tells itself from the journal entries, but just putting it all together. If all this does is live in Uena County, and it's something that we are able to enjoy as the residents of Uena County, and have an opportunity to enjoy good music and a good story, and that's all that happens with this, I'm 100% satisfied. The agreement does contemplate if it goes past that, like Commissioner Stringer said. But this is just, if it can happen here, I think it's, I think it's going to be absolutely amazing. And all I'm asking for, the stuff in Uena County, is that my name can be somewhere on the bottom of the front page that says, John Sturmer wrote the script. That's all I'm asking for.
Citizen.
Citizen John. That, so really, that's all for, within Uena County, is that there's just, that it's attributed to who wrote it. And of course, if we get the music from Allen Doyle, he would get those credits, too, because those are his songs.
Okay. I guess that brings me back to Sonya's point, which was, maybe, seems a little vague. What did you have in mind? It said, other people need to look into, I mean, we're down to actions here. We're looking to do action. What do you have in mind? What are you thinking needs to be done? That's, yeah.
You can tell it's summer.
I know. This is the first time I've worn them, too.
Talking shoes.
Sorry. I, I think I was asking more along the lines, like Susan said, like Alta. I remember Alta doing a lot of work for the arts and that. And that was volunteer and stuff that she did. But where this could be used, and it may be copyrighted material is what I'm understanding from him, his music. I just thought it had been, like, purchased for other events. When we've done other plays and other things, they've had to purchase those things. So I'm not sure if we couldn't do something more private, where we just say, can you come up with a play? You know, a musical script or whatever for this? And then whoever wants to use it, like the Arts Council, the Outlaw Trail, the schools, or whoever would want to use it, could purchase it. I mean, I was, Pam, was quickly looking up what fees, copyright fees, they charge you to use them for plays or one-time-use things. And what we were seeing, it was only like $75 to $250 per performance. That seems a lot less than.
No, that's not accurate.
Okay, that was just what we were finding.
Just for, I think, Hello Dolly, last year, they paid $6,000 to $8,000 for the royalty rights to perform the play.
For to do the play.
And now schools, if you're looking up schools, usually, and, so for example, Phantom of the Opera is not, it's on Broadway, and schools can perform it. Like, our high school just performed it a number of years ago. Community theaters can't even perform Phantom of the Opera. They don't even allow it. So I don't know what they would charge a school because they have that educational benefit. And so there, that would be, I guess, probably another royalty arrangement. But, for example, we just can't even do, Vernal Theater Live, Outlaw Trail, just can't do Phantom of the Opera. The rights are not allowed.
They won't release those.
But they do for, for the school. So, yeah, it is kind of all, it's not, that's why I tried to give a big window of, or big space between how much it would be on the royalties.
And the reason I'm asking is, we seem to be at a, looks like we're looking for a decision point. But the way you brought it up, it sounded like it needed more discourse. But I just was wondering what that meant. Who, what, when, what were we looking for with this? Who, what, when, what, what were we looking for with this?
I was thinking more along letting someone private do it, I guess, and then purchasing it if you could. But like you say, I'm not aware of all these other things. There's a lot of questions. Like, can they even purchase it once it's available? Like, they're not allowing private theaters to do Phantom of the Opera.
And that's just, that was just one example, because I've always,
Yeah.
I've always wanted to do that play and I'm not in high school anymore, so I can't do it.
So it's kind of just, there's a ton of questions, but one of the big ones was cost versus how much it will be used and utilized in the community over years, I guess, is what you're looking at. Versus if someone would do this, and then you could purchase it, you could purchase it.
So, Commissioner, can I jump in a little bit on this? So, for example, there have been no costs to the county, except this agreement was printed out on the county printer and, and I guess the electricity for that to, and then into this meeting. The, the, right now, the expense would be the workshop with V6 Media. We did receive some quotes on that. I believe the one that we're gonna go for, and it would come through a commission meeting, through the normal bill process and PO, which has been acquired. I believe that one is less than three thousand dollars to be able to do full production uh, recording of the, the music and volunteer actors to be able to do a workshop. And then there will be, um, potentially some travel costs and expenditures there to meet up with Alan Doyle's team to try and present this to him. So I, I think at, right there, you're at about maybe ten thousand dollars or so, when that's all said and done. If he says no, it's, it's done. Right? I don't have any other music right now to insert into, into this storyline. So that would essentially be the end of it. If he says yes, then there would need to be a, uh, some type of a royalty rights agreement with Alan Doyle. And that would have to come through a commission meeting as well, to be able to approve. How much would it cost to obtain the rights? And, and if he's wanting to charge, you know, an, an arm and a leg and say, well, I want, you know, I want this to be my retirement now, then it would probably die. If he sticks with what he is saying, that he's really interested in this and he, he likes the idea and that he's a history buff, hopefully we get, when I say we, the county, myself, the residents, get a good deal and we're able to use, able to use his music. But that contract would, would have to come through a commission meeting as well. So wouldn't, the commission wouldn't be blindsided, I guess, is what I'm saying, on how much it would cost to acquire the rights. Our discussions haven't even gotten there, between me and Doyle's team. It's only been, can I use these songs to put a workshop together? And then pitch the idea.
And go from there. So you're looking at tentative ten thousand dollars tentative.
Well, I'm just estimating how much the quotes came back from V6 Media and how much it would cost to meet up with Alan Doyle and pitch the, the workshop to him.
Do you know if the UNA Arts Council has ever done anything like this? For any of the productions or anything they've participated in? I just didn't know if there had been any outreach to any of these groups or anything to involve them or.
Yeah, I don't know. I, personally, for me, I, I ran this angle because of the John Wesley Powell River Festival. And just saying, is this, no, and these are great questions, so don't, I'm just trying to ask the questions. I love the questions.
Cut this down. I'm just, I have a lot of questions, so thank you.
So that was the angle that I went, because the county is putting together a river festival and we're, it's growing every single year and saying, hey, what could we do in twenty-twenty-four if we could have a, a musical?
So you just said something that, that rang in my mind, then. So this is just an agreement between us and John to work on doing this. Every, the expenses, everything, the travel, all that's gonna come to us before to approve?
It all comes through UNA County purchasing policy. So if there's any, if, and then, so if we have to acquire something, for example, uh, the services of V6 Media, they're the, as far as I know, they're the only studio quality thing we have in UNA County. So we reached out to them and we have a PO waiting. I think the recording dates we have is, one is July, July fifteenth, we're doing one part of the session and then on August fifth, we're doing the remainder of the recording session at, at, uh, V6 Media. And then we'll, and then we'll have, we'll have the workshop that can then hopefully be pitched to Alan Doyle and convince him to let us use his songs.
So you'd have to come back to the county to get approval to pay for the workshop, to cut those videos or do the work.
It would, it would go through the, the PO process, yep.
Okay. That's for now.
Yeah, no, I, I love it.
Thank you for allowing me.
Thank you. Okay, Susan, one more, and then we're gonna move on.
Susan Horrings, I'm bragging on Alta Winward, Sheila Wheeler, Janet Wallace, all the many people that put on the Outlaw Trail Festival. Brad, how much money do you think between your parents and us? Hundred thousand in volunteer money?
I don't know.
For the amount of time and effort, energy and money. And Mrs. Hunting, is Pam here today? What your mother put in and Ray put in. So I think it's quite a deal to be able to have John come here and do this and write it and do it for us. In the economic development, the money it'll bring into this county will be amazing, because Alta's, the money that Alta's brought in since the Outlaw Trail Festival is still coming in. So, thank you, John.
Okay. Do you have any other comments, John? Good?
That, that's it.
Okay. So what I'm gonna do is I, I will put it up for a motion. If we get a motion in a second, we'll move forward. If not, we'll.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the mute, the motion that we, uh, UNA County, between UNA County and Jonathan Sturmer for the development of the musical for the John Wesley Powell Festival.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. I'll keep working on it.
Okay, Joseph, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Are you still there?
I am. Did you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. So I, I guess we're, we're concluded, so we're gonna go ahead and hang up.
Hey, sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we're to the point in our meeting for public comment. I ask you to keep your, your comments to three minutes and go to there. Here at the public.
Is it on now? Sonya Norton. I've had a lot of questions brought to my attention, so I'm bringing some of those forward. And one of them is, I wanted to speak with you individually, but that's been difficult for me, not really on your part. I, I would, the Special Service District, one, I'm not sure if that should be moved forward. I like the idea of keeping the rec and the transportation separate. From my experience with them in the past, I know it may be different now. But I believe they need full-time directors dedicated to those districts. They are a very busy district out of all of our districts. Not that the other ones aren't, but they, I just feel they need a full-time director for each of those. UNA Impact, I served on that board for many years. And I do think that you could do something with that district. I don't know what, but I think you could do something with that. And so I would just encourage you. I know you're into it already, quite a ways. I don't know if there's anything you can do now, but my input is just, I would like to see those two, say, stay separate, if possible.
Okay. We're actually looking at that as that goes along, so. Any other comments?
Can I, can I make one?
Sure can.
Okay, so in one week, next Monday night is opening night for Outlaw Trail Theater, speaking of theater, of their production of Newsies. It is one of the largest casts they have ever put together. I think there's either seventy-four or seventy-eight cast members. It's massive. It's huge. Um, we have a brand-new stage. The old, the old one has been torn down and they've built a, a new one um, where it literally looks like you're walking down the streets of nineteen-hundred New York. And it's, it's pretty amazing. If anybody knows Newsies, they know it's high-energy, lots of laughs and stuff like that. So I just wanted to let the community know. Go, go out and get it. It's gonna, you, you won't be disappointed.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment? Going once? Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment. I do have a couple thing, well, one thing I would like to talk about. From last week, had a lot of concern on transferring the money and what it was gonna do to the property tax and what it was gonna do to our, our balances, fund balance. And so I took the comments, I went back nine years and I put graphs together. And I, I prepared these if people want them. It actually talks about where we were in two thousand fourteen on what we're collecting on property tax up to what our projected will be in twenty-twenty-two. Has what we've done on debt payoff from two thousand fifteen till twenty-twenty-two. And so it shows exactly what we have done each year. So it's, it, and it shows that. It shows the cash balance in the, the county, of what we've carried from two thousand, from fifteen until twenty-twenty-two and what the projected to twenty-twenty-three will be in. And then the big one was if it was gonna break us. And so there's another graph put together of what we had in the, in the, uh, general fund and the rainy day funds in two thousand fifteen and what we'll have in two thousand twenty-three. These are all pulled off of the county audited reports or off the Utah State Tax Commission. If you want one of these, I have them. And it's self-explanatory and it'll tell you exactly where we're at. As I do take it seriously, that I don't want to put the county in a position that we're not gonna have the money to operate if we pay the debt off. But you will see that we, we, after paying the debt off, we actually have more money in our general fund and our, and our rainy day fund than we did in two thousand fifteen. So with that, I've prepared these if anybody wants one. You're welcome to have them.
Tammy Mecum, um, UNA County citizen. Bart, I appreciate your efforts in explaining what you're explaining, but this is not on the agenda. And so if line items are not on the agenda, you shouldn't be allowed to discuss it in commission meeting.
John?
So that, that is accurate on agenda items or being able to discuss an item that they're then gonna take action on in the, in the future. I don't think a statement, now if the commission then wanted to take this and start talking about it, I would definitely say, hey, wait a second. That's not on the agenda. Um, but ma- making a, a public statement, I, I guess it depends on if any of the commissioners wanted to respond to you, but if you're just making a statement, then.
Yeah, I'm just making a statement, same.
Then we're probably good.
I just wanted to clarify from last week what some of the, uh, comments were, that we have looked into it. And if you don't want this, you don't have to have it. But it's, it's here. If you want it, you're, it's available, so. Any other comments from the commissioners on something, anything different?
Well, it's not really different, but it's a clarification, because sometimes we come to these meetings and then we have questions or public comments. You don't have everything really, um, there, but you have a chance to get it. So I'm coming back for clarification on a couple of things. This is, uh, ran the certified tax rates from two thousand eleven to twenty-twenty-one. And for six out of eight years, starting in two thousand fourteen, cut it every year. Which is interesting, because I think there were several times, number one, twenty, there, there's no doubt that they're cut in election years. I even got that, um, from previous commissioners. So there is no, um, you know, we, we heard last week in particular that if we do these kind of things, you know, we're gonna run the county into the ground. And you can see the red ones and you can see the black ones. So starting in two thousand fourteen, it was cut every year. Twenty fifteen was not, twenty twenty-one was not. Every other year, they were cut. So that being said, along with the, um, information that Commissioner Haslam had, um, I did also have that, the amount of money that the county's taken in and where that money was going. And it was interesting, because we kept taking in the money, but we weren't spending it on debt and we weren't spending it on giving it back to taxpayers. We were taking just about as much as you could take. In fact, we've, our audits showed that we were pinging the dial in terms of how much we were carrying over. Which is really interesting, and this was, this is kind of a slap upside the head to the, um, Republican Committee. One of the planks in the platform, starting at the state, is to, is about tax. And it's not supposed to take any more tax than it takes to run the county or to run the government, period. But for some reason, UNA County has, seems to be, we're at a point where we're pushing the amount that we're carrying in our balances. We're also, it appears as though sometimes we, um, avoid breaking that balance by timing. But more importantly, during all those years from two thousand fourteen, we were collecting that money. We weren't paying off the debt until about twenty, well, it's in these pages, you can look for yourself. This is UNA County bonded debt. I really want you to, to get one of these. And you can see where we started taking care of it. December fifteenth, we had sixty-one million dollars in debt to the county. And as of December twenty-first, we're down to thirty-six. And we talked a little bit about what we did last week, in which case the debt in the county would be one million, one hundred forty-five thousand. That's a reduction of about sixty million dollars in about seven years. So the question is, where was all that money? Where was it going? What was it doing? I started looking around, and this was something else, it's another clarification from last, I believe it was Tuesday. I started looking for stuff regarding our financial strategy in the county. And we're missing quite a few things. Um, we've never established how much we think we need to carry. We've maximized it, but that's not been a conscious decision that I know of. It's certainly not one that I think we've had in here. We very rarely talk about what our policies are going to cost us. If you, if you look at the federal government, every time a bill comes up, they run through the Office of Management and Budget or for the General Accountability Office, how much this is gonna cost you going forward. I don't really see a lot of that. I can't find the places, I see processes, but I don't see how they've been invoked for how to determine what percentage we're going to give as a, as a raise or as a 401K. It just seems kind of random. I don't know where they come from. You can't, I, I, doesn't mean they're not there. But I haven't been able to find a plan, like a financial plan that you would have for any, any business. Do you have a labor operations ratio? What debt-income ratio? Because here we are, sometime back in two thousand fourteen, we had run up sixty-some million dollars worth of debt. Where, how did that figure into our big plan? What were we supposed to be doing? But I guess in the end, what it really comes down to is what happened to the money? If you have a lot of money and you have more money than you need for running the county and you've put in enough money to say, this should be our safety net, or if you wanna max it out, say, well, we're gonna make the decision to max it out. At some point, if you lived in Alaska, you would get a rebate check, because when they get more money than they need to run the government, they give the money back. So we didn't give it back to taxpayers. So the question is where to go? Because we spent it, but we just didn't spend it on debt and we didn't give it back to taxpayers. So that's all, that's a, a big question for me is, So that's all, that's a, a big question for me, is where exactly did that go? And you can account for some of it. And some of you will, will know, that's actually become the cause of a lot of controversy. The other thing I wanted to address from last week is, in this same line, I use the term progressive. And a progressive, I, I heard through the grapevine that maybe some people thought I was calling them a Democrat. So you have to be a Democrat to be a progressive. All you have to do is wanna use other people's money to pay for things you wanna do. So the Republicans can be progressive, too. But that does not seem to be a, again, a plank in the Utah Republican platform. And then lastly, the thing that I do want to mention is, we've had this, keep hearing this, it's become mantra more than, doesn't mean much. Where is the, this toxic atmosphere, toxic relationship? What's going on? Well, technically, there's not really supposed to be an, a real amicable relationship. We're supposed to be a check and balance. The last time that we were really, really close and everybody was working well together, we spent a lot of money on raises. And the ones that got the biggest raises were the ones that are involved in putting forth a number, approving a number, and paying for the number. So I think that's probably a bad thing. I mean, even the, the way it sits, the clerk and the auditor are supposed to be a check on each other. The way we set up our ordinance, there's a check between the authorizer or the budget keeper, which is the commission, the auditor who goes through and decides what is legitimate, is this being done right? And then the treasurer, who pays it. If everybody's on the same page, our check and balance is gone. And our history shows what happens when it does. And these are numbers that come right straight out of the county. They're not made up, they're not my numbers, belong to the county. So, in short, when we get enough money, when we collect enough taxes, it should be going back to taxpayers, not to county, um, projects that don't benefit the taxpayer. The second thing is, a financial plan, a blueprint, is, is very important. We didn't realize, um, the closest thing we have to a blueprint now is we've put debt retirement on there. So that you can see, you can follow it from two thousand seventeen forward. Actually, and there was a little bit done before that. As I mentioned before, I went and sat down with Mike back in two thousand fifteen, and we went, that's how we went forward and retired that or changed that debt from five-and-a-half percent interest down to two-point-nine or whatever it is. So there is an effort, but we really haven't laid out for your benefit, the public. You don't know what we're doing. We, if we had a blueprint for financial operations, you should be able to decide what that is. And the best example, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just real quick, 'cause starting on like getting into what you would like to see happen, I think would go beyond just a comment. I mean, if you're making, if you're making just general statements, fine, but if you're kinda saying, this is the direction I wanna go, we, we would need to get that on an agenda.
Okay. Well, I won't say that, then. What I will say is, as an example, when we started giving, when we started, this, this came up before. Summary of elected, UNA County elected official salary, where we had chained inflation at one-point-nine percent and, and we had the dates and so on. What I see is a, a set of numbers that for some reason benefited, I, I really don't know how they came up with these. For the clerk, the commissioner, the assessor, the recorder, the treasurer, we're all getting paid the same in two thousand two. By two thousand fifteen, the clerk, the three commissioners were well above the other elected officials. And for some reason, the H R director went from sixty thousand to ninety-three thousand. And it was like a five-point-six-one percent increase. So it's, it's very odd. And at the, the rate we were going, we were showing that the commission would have, if we'd have just stayed on that schedule, we would have, we would now be paying more. The commission would be paid a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. The sheriff would only be paid a hundred and thirty thousand. So what was our strategy in trying to determine? Should, should you say things like, um, well, should you? There are all kinds of things that you could have done, but things that need to be done. Even if you just had a plan that said, we'll always be more one percent over inflation. That's how we ended up spending some of this money. This is how we ended up, um, again, using money not to go back to the taxpayers or not to go to the debt. But it is going today. It is going to the tax, to the debt today. When it's paid off next year, then there's going to be another question to be asked, and that is, what are we gonna do with the money? We taking care of the debt, and we're still collecting enough to do that? That'll be an interesting question. But once again, back to the issue of clarifying what is a, what I think is progressive. Clarifying what I said, um, about a financial strategy. And then lastly, about, um, how you, the relationship between the elected officials. Let's face it, if you go to change something, um, and you tend to gore someone's ox, they don't always look at it favorably. So, anyway, there, that was my public comment.
Do you have anything you wanna say? Okay. Motion to adjourn.